Okay, folks, let's quiet down, please. Let's keep the volume down. Has everybody moved into this room from next door? Yes? Okay, where do we get going, folks? Let's keep it down. So, I did not officially open the meeting. We're gonna open the meeting. It's, can't see that far anymore. Is it 7:35? 7:33. All right. I think Julie is off the hook. So, let's have a motion to appoint Don Granias Town Moderator Associate, sorry, Deputy Town Moderator. Somebody make that motion, just a second. All in favor of Don Granias Deputy Town Moderator? You can actually, we can say aye now. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Beth. Oh, you know, actually, I'm sorry. Before we get going, let's just have everybody up here introduce themselves. We'll start all the way on my right, down this end.
I'm Rebecca Oldham, I'm the Town Administrator.
Jason Aves, Selectman.
Daniel McDonald, Selectman.
Ed Watson, Board of Selectmen.
Mark Coranto, Board of Selectmen.
Kathy Kestrel, Board of Selectmen.
Hi, my name is William Darby, the Town Moderator.
Elizabeth Cunnitt, Town Clerk.
Adam Costa, Town Council.
Jim Scanlon.
Alex Woods.
Finance Board.
Tony Hill, Finance Board.
Melissa Major, Secretary for the Finance Board.
Sarah Sheen McGrath, Finance Board.
All right, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm Ruth Rivard, I chair the Finance Board, and I just wanted to take a quick minute to introduce our Finance Board booklet that we published for you this year. And I just wanted to point out that I know the override is a... Can you hear me now? Is that better? So, I wanted to just take a minute to point out, I know that the override is a sensitive issue. We've done a lot of work, we've done a lot of information, published a lot of information the school has and the town has as well. That's all on the website. But I also wanted to point out our introduction letter to the town meeting because I want to make sure everybody knows that we have a really dedicated staff who has worked really hard this year, and all of the volunteer boards have worked really hard this year too, to contribute to the town of Groveland. We made a couple of notes of highlights that we had the Division of Local Services come in and do a financial review. The Collins Center did a wage and classification study. The Town Administrator and the finance staff created an extensive document of financial policies. There's also been a newly created, very comprehensive capital plan. We've done successful tax title initiatives, collection initiatives, I should say. We've got a successful, favorable audit management level letter. We also have a lot of initiatives, is this thing new? There's a lot of initiatives funded by grants, and I wanted to point that out too. There's a culvert being replaced with a million dollar grant received. At this meeting, we hear a lot of people mention the Center Street land, that seems to be a bit of a bone of contention. Our Town Administrator and our staff has gotten a $191,000 grant to conduct a feasibility study for that land. And there's several other grants, a $59,000 grant for the pedestrian improvements, a comprehensive master plan is underway with a $75,000 grant, and there's signalization, there's sidewalks for $400,000 grant funded. So, I just want to make sure everybody knows how many people are working really hard to make Groveland a community, a better community, how many people are really working to make this a great place to live. So, thank you.
Thank you. The Town Clerk needs to know the name of the person who made the motion for and seconded for our deputy moderator. And just one more thing before we get going. There's a lot of people here, maybe some people haven't been here before. As Town Moderator, I can give people leeway. I've never had a timer that allows people to speak or not speak for a certain amount of time. My thought is that as long as you're saying something new and relevant, I'll let you speak. If you're just saying the same thing over and over, you really don't want to hear it again, okay? You can do that with your vote. The other thing is that we can be nice to each other, even if we disagree. I know, shocking, Don. I've often said, it's not the fact that we disagree, it's how we disagree. So, and to that end too, any comments are made through the moderator, that's me, not to each other. So, we're not gonna have two people standing back and forth, having a conversation, okay? It's through the moderator. Having said that, I think that's all I want to say now. Beth, there's a couple of things you need to say for us to get going.
So, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in the annual town meeting to meet, sorry, at the Dr. Elmer S. Fagnell School, 253 School Street, Groveland, Mass. on Monday, April 24th. All right, April 24th, 2023, at 7 o'clock PM, to act upon or take any other action relative thereto on the following articles.
Okay, so, right, you know, a couple sessions ago, when we were, when I started speaking, I said I was gonna ask, that the warrant is a little different. You guys have the article, I have the article and a motion. I'm gonna read the motion, somebody's gonna move it and second it, but we need somebody to make a motion to suspend the reading of the articles.
I make a motion to suspend the reading of the articles.
All in favor of the motion to suspend the reading, say aye. Oppose, say no. It's unanimous. All right, let's get rolling. Article 1, motion, that the town transfer $50,000 from town free cash, there's a line item there, to Snow and Ice, line item. Need a second.
Second.
All right, motion, second. Any discussion on the motion, Article 1? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion, Article 1, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. It is unanimous. Under Article 2, that the town authorize the selectmen to petition the state for and accept any sum available under provisions of General Law Chapter 90, said funds to apportion and expend in accordance with General Law Chapter 90 and the rules and regulations of Mass DOT.
So moved.
Motion, second. Article 2. All right, they're telling me I gotta slow down. Kathy, yep.
Mark.
All right, so, motion, second. Any discussion under Article 2? Let's take a vote. All in favor of Article 2, say, the motion, Article 2, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. It's unanimous. Article 3. Flip it over. Where's my motion? Okay. That the town pursuant to General Law Chapter 98, Section 56, impose upon the owner of any establishment wherein device is subject to the provisions of General Law Chapter 98, the fees for the sealing and inspecting of weighing or measuring devices as set forth in Article 3 of the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, under Article 3. Any discussion? Take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 3, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. It's unanimous. Just hang on for one second, just gotta get rid of some pages. Article 4. I believe on your warrant there, it says it requires a two-thirds majority. That is incorrect. It just is a simple majority, that's not a funding article. So, it is just a simple majority. Motion that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen may determine, the fee easement, leasehold, license, and/or other real property interests, permanent or temporary, in, on, over, across, under, and along UpTech Road at 9 UpTech Road, 1,045 square feet, plus or minus, through UpTech Road, 1,050 square feet, plus or minus, all as shown on a plan by TEC Inc., 282 Merrimack Street, 2nd Floor Lawrence, Mass. 01843, and dated October 4th, 2022, and on file with the Town Clerk. The acquisition of said land having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Groveland, and be used for municipal purposes under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen, and enter into all agreements and execute any and all documents or instruments necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 4, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. It's unanimous. Article 5. Same thing, it's just a simple majority. Motion that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen may determine, the fee easement, leasehold, license, and/or other real property interests, permanent or temporary, in, on, over, across, under, and along 908 Salem Street. Specifically, that area noted is Prop. Perm. Easement E-1, consisting of 34 square feet, plus or minus, as shown on a plan entitled Permanent Easement Summary drawn by TEC Inc., 282 Merrimack Street, 2nd Floor Lawrence, Mass. 01843, dated October 17, 2022, and a copy of which has been placed on file with the Town Clerk. The acquisition of said land having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Groveland, and to be used for municipal purposes under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen, and enter into all agreements and execute any and all documents or instruments necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article, and further in order to pay for said acquisition expenses related thereto the town.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, and second, any discussion under Article 5? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion, Article 5, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. It's unanimous. Article 6. Oops, sorry. Time for me to leave. So, do I need to go out there?
First off, thank you to all the town employees and volunteers and people that are on the appointed boards. Just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the town. Article 6, to see if the town will vote pursuant... Article 6, motion, that the town pursuant to its authority under General Law C-41, Section 1B contingent on the acceptance by the voters at annual town election, authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint three citizens to serve on the Board of Assessors for a term of three years. All appointed officials to serve staggered terms in accordance and to succeed the elected officials in their position in accordance with General Law C-41, 1B. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the article, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Unanimous. Thank you. Taking the rest of the night off.
All right, thank you, Don. Article 7. That the town adopt the provisions of General Law Chapter 148, Section 26H, requiring lodging and boarding houses to be protected by automatic sprinkler systems in accordance with the State Building Code. Motion, second. Any discussion under Article 7? All right, speak up. Say, state your name and, fire away. Yeah, come to the mic. And if, and that's one thing I forgot to say, if you know you're gonna speak to an article... Hello? Yeah, if you know you're gonna, yes, speak to an article, just, do we just have one mic? Is it over here? Two. So, just make your way to the mic before we, you know, get to that point, so we don't have to wait. All right.
I'm sorry, Greg LeBrack, Baldwin Terrace.
I'm just curious, this is a little different than I'm used to seeing a warrant, so forgive me, but what's the definition of a boarding or a rooming house? I mean, if this is like, if someone has an Airbnb, it now becomes a lodging or a rooming house? I don't understand, I don't know the definitions of these things.
This on? Robert Valentine, 12 Merritt Ave. In accordance to NFPA, a room and boarding house is more than four people that live in the house that are not related. No, permanent.
All right, any other discussion? Let's take a vote. Under Article 7. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Majority favorable. Article 8, that the town adopt the provisions, General Law Chapter 148, Section 26, is that an IRNL? I'm sorry. 26I, to require automatic sprinkler systems in new or substantially rehabilitated multifamily dwellings. Kathy? Motion, second. Any discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 8, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. That is a majority in favor. Okay. Article 9. That the town amend the town of Groveland general bylaws, Section 2-42, by amending the name of the revolving fund, Pines Maintenance Revolving Fund, to the Recreation, Operation, and Maintenance Revolving Fund, create a new revolving fund pursuant to General Law Chapter 44, Section 53 and a half, to be called the Wetlands Protection Act Revolving Fund as set forth in Article 10 of the warrant, and to set the annual spending limits for the revolving accounts established in general bylaws for fiscal 2024 as set forth in the warrant. All right, motion, and second. Any discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 9, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Majority favorable passes. Article 10, that the town amend Article 1, Section 2-1 of the town of Groveland general bylaws as set forth in Article 10 of the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion, Article 10, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. I didn't, there was nobody against, right? I didn't, unanimous. All right. Article 11, that the town amend Article 6, Section 2-123 of the town of Groveland general bylaws as set forth in Article 11 of the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion under Article 11? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion, Article 11, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. It's unanimous. Article 12. That the town accept General Law Chapter 41, Section 110A, to authorize the Town Clerk's office to remain closed on all Saturdays, and to treat Saturdays as a legal holiday for the purposes of calculating the timeframe for filling, I'm sorry, for filing matters in that office.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion under Article 12? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion, Article 12, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Majority passes. Article 13, that the town amend Article 3, Section 3-3, licensing of dogs and kennels of the town of Groveland general bylaws by amending it as set forth, as set forth in Article 13 of the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion under Article 13? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion, Article 13, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Majority favorable. Article 14. That the town accept the provisions of General Law Chapter 140, Section 139, relative to dog license fees, so as to provide that no fee shall be charged for a license for a service animal as defined by the Americans with Disabilities Act, and dogs owned by a person aged 70 or over.
So moved.
Any discussion under Article 14? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion, Article 14, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. It's unanimous. Article 15. That, excuse me, that the town amend Section 15, Board of Trustees of the town of Groveland general bylaws, as set forth in Article 15 of the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion under Article 15? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion, Article 15, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. It's unanimous, passes. Article 16. That the town accept and amend the renumbering and revision of the various general bylaws of the town from their original numbering, or their numbering, the prior general bylaws compilation, as amended through May 23, 2022, to the numbering or codification, arrangement, sequence, and captions, and the comprehensive revisions to the text of the general bylaws as set forth in the final draft of the code of the town of Groveland, dated 3/2023, and which is on file with the Town Clerk, and has been distributed at the town meeting, all as set forth in Article 16 of the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion, Article 16, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Majority favorable. Article 17, that the town amend its zoning bylaws to delete and replace Section 50-8.2C as set forth in Article 17 of the warrant. Yes, this requires a two-thirds majority.
So moved.
Any discussion? Let's take a vote, under Article 17. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. I believe that is a two-thirds majority. Passes. Article 18. That the town amend its zoning bylaws to add the following definition of building inspected as Section 50-2.1 as set forth in Article 18 of the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion, Article 18, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and I, again, apologize, requires a two-thirds majority again. Let's just try once more, we'll start. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. It's unanimous. Article 19, also requires a two-thirds majority. That the town amend its zoning bylaws to add the definition of farm nonexempt to Section 50-2.1 as set forth in Article 19 of the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, Article 19, say aye.
Aye.
I said it, yeah. All opposed, say no. It's unanimous, passes. Article 20. That the town amend its zoning bylaws to delete and replace Section 50-8.2A as set forth in Article 20 of the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Again, also a two-thirds majority. Any discussion? Let's take a vote. Under Article 20, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. I believe that was two-thirds, we'll just do it once more. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. I'm declaring that a two-thirds majority, favor. Article 21. That the town appropriate a reserve from Community Preservation Fund fiscal year 2024, estimated annual revenues, the amounts as set forth in Article 21 of the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion under Article 21? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion, Article 21, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. That is unanimous. Article 22. That the town appropriate a sum of up to $10,646 from the Community Preservation General Reserve Fund, General Reserve FY 2023, to be made available towards the purchase of an all-terrain vehicle and trailer for the Groveland Community Trail. The project is managed by the town planner and town administrator under the CPA category of recreation.
So moved.
Any discussion under Article 22?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hold on a sec. Mike Dempsey for the Community Preservation Committee. So, Mr. Moderator, the CPC is excited tonight. If you notice, we have 11 articles before you for approval, and we're excited about those. The biggest thing is, I want to point out, is that because of our state match of CPA funds, your tax that you paid on your property is actually worth, every dollar, tonight is worth a dollar eighty-four of impact due to the 84% state match. So, that's a great thing to prove that CPA is valuable for our town. So, tonight's projects are kind of unique because they all involve properties and resources that we already own. We're not buying anything new, these are investments in what we already have. So, included are articles for Elm Park, Shanahan Field, Vizi Park, Pines Recreation Area, Washington Park, Groveland Community Trail, Riverview Cemetery, Lucille's Cottage, and Washington Hall. So, these investments offer new recreation options for people of all ages, more health and wellness options, highlights of our town's history, and more arts and culture. Now, you may hear tonight that it's...
All right, they don't want your explanation, Mike. If, if anyone wants to ask him questions, I'm sure he'd be glad to answer them, correct? That's some of the time. So, any, any other discussion under Article 22? Thank you, Mike. We appreciate the work. What's that?
I do have one question.
Yeah.
Don Granias. How much money do we have in the CPA fund for spending? This looks like a million three. I just, I can't imagine we have that much built up, that, of things that aren't finished from previous ones.
Can somebody answer that question for us?
Yes. So, there is approximately, I believe, about $2.5 million of unappropriated, not related to any current project.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator. Daniel McDonald, White Island. Is it appropriate time now for us to be spending over a million dollars on pet projects when we're here on a Prop. 2.5 override and asking people to reach into their pockets? And we're getting all the bells and whistles to go with it. And I know it comes out of another pocket, and there's all kinds of free money from the state, but that's my free money, comes out of this pocket or that, doesn't matter which one, but it's our pockets, that's all.
All right, any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Yep.
As I was going to say in my original opening statement is, I understand that, you know, some people may feel, gee whiz, why can't we use this money towards our override? Well, unfortunately, that's not the way it works. The majority of the town voted for CPA, so we have CPA. We have funds in CPA for these projects. That's what the money is for, for these projects. So, it isn't that things are inappropriate, or we might spend the money somewhere else. Unfortunately, we can't do that.
All right, thank you.
These funds are for these type of projects.
All right, let's, any other discussion? Let's, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion, Article 22, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no.
No.
Majority favorable passes. Article 23. That the town appropriate a sum of up to $21,538 from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve FY 2023 to be made available for Washington Hall paving and hydro seating. The project is to be managed by the Groveland Historic Society and the Town Administrator under the CPA category of Historic Preservation.
So moved.
Motion, and second. Any discussion? Let's take a vote. Under Article 23, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Majority favorable passes. Article 24. That the town appropriate a sum of up to $450,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve FY 2023 to be made available for the construction of a skate park at the Pines Recreation Area. The project is to be managed by the Recreation Committee and the Town Administrator. The project is to be managed by the Recreation Committee and the town administrator under the CPA category of recreation.
So moved.
Motion is second, any discussion? And just, again, you have to state your name for the record, please, before you start speaking.
My name is Mike Cludier, fifteen Byfield Road. What are the hours of operation that are proposed for the skate park?
I think it's twenty-four seven, no, did somebody have an answer for that?
Short of that being defined, that's what it's gonna be.
No.
Same as the River Pines Park.
They said dusk till dawn, is what I heard.
Dusk till dawn.
Yes.
Okay, and that'll be patrolled by the police?
Dawn to dusk.
Dawn to dusk?
Sorry, dawn to dusk, sorry.
Or vice versa.
Just seeing if y'all are awake.
All right, thank you.
All right, Article twenty-four, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I'm gonna try it one more time, I think it passed, but just to be sure, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All right, I still believe it passed, but we're gonna have a hand count. So we, we're all set for that, so all in favor of the article of the motion, please raise your hand, keep your hand raised, yeah, keep your hand raised until somebody points at you and tells you to put it down.
Yeah, ask them the next one, because I feel like you don't, yeah, you don't understand.
Okay, folks, all opposed to Article, it's twenty-four, all opposed to Article twenty-four, please raise your hand, again, keep it raised until somebody tells you to put it down. Okay, the tally is one eighty in favor, seventy-one opposed, so it passes. That's okay. Article twenty-five, that the town appropriate a sum of up to one hundred ten thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars from the Community Preservation General Reserve FY two thousand and twenty-three to be made available for building a splash pad at the Pines Recreation Area. The project is to be managed by the Recreation Committee and the town administrator under the CPA category of recreation.
So moved.
All right, discussion under Article twenty-five, go ahead, yeah, and just again, state your name.
Alona Barriere, seventeen Chestnut Street, just before we go into any more of these, we have questions about where these things are gonna be placed at the Pines, all about pickleball, love me a splash pad, but what will happen with Kentucky youth football and their practice?
All right, does somebody have an answer for us?
Does anybody know what the plan is?
Go ahead.
The splash pad will be...
Speak into the mic, just.
The splash pad will be to the, if you're facing down into the Pines, to the left of the playground.
So that's where they practice?
They practice further on the far field.
No, they use that too.
Both of them. And how big is the splash pad? The, the goal was to maintain without interfering with youth football or anybody else that utilizes the field. The pickleball and tennis courts are going in the gravel area to the right of the playground and bathrooms where originally it was set to be.
Okay.
And the skate park is down in front of the cell tower.
Okay, so they can assure that this vote, if we vote yes, it will not impact the Kentucky youth football practice area?
It's a very small pad, I don't know the exact size. Who's in charge of it?
It's a valid one, just saying.
I agree.
Is it?
Hundred percent. Yeah.
All right. Kathy?
Kathy Kestrel, twelve Hillview Drive, I voted in favor of this, I just wanted to explain real quickly why. Many of these projects have been sitting in the pipeline, and that's why there's so many of them coming out at once. We finally have a town administrator, a town planner, and a very active recreation committee. In addition, we have a full-time fire chief, a fantastic police chief, so these articles have been worked on by the CPA committee and by all these other parties and departments as well. This particular sprinkler thing will only be in operation for about six weeks, it's not a pool, it just sprinkles water, motion detected, so it won't be on when nobody's there, and obviously in a drought, we won't be able to use it, you know, but it's to add a little something extra down there for the younger children at the parks, the idea is to create a, we already have a beautiful park, but to encourage all different ages to find something to do down at the Pines Recreation Area, fully utilize it, thank you.
Daniel McDonald, Waikie Lane, I voted against it, I think it's a waste of money, you could get a lawn sprinkler for about twenty bucks and put it in your yard and save the taxpayers about, what, how much money? I think it's gonna be a fungal pool, I think it's gonna attract people from other towns, and it's gonna make the Pines more crowded. Yep, I do, I do, yep, and, and that's my opinion, and I'm sticking to it, and we don't have any money, as far as I know, budgeted to clean that bacterial pool.
All right, any other discussion?
It's gonna be, where's the drains?
Go ahead, state your name.
Craig Tedeschi, sixteen Sylvan Street, my concern is liability, outside, people coming in, middle of the night, using the skate park, somebody gets hurt, what's the liability?
Right, well, I guess, just general question about liability, does anybody wanna respond to that? He said the skate park.
I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's town property, we have football, we have lacrosse, we have a swing set, we have all kinds of fun stuff going on, hopefully nobody gets hurt, but we do have a fire department and a police department to assist in an emergency, so we're covered.
And lots of insurance, I imagine. All right, anyone else?
Mike Cludier, Byfield Road, I just have a question about two things, parking, is there gonna, is it gonna require additional parking spots, because it's already pretty crowded down there, and maintenance, is there any budgeted maintenance for any of these things? Because in the, in years past, and I know that you'll remember, Mr. Moderator, that was, that was one of the, the issues that we had, that we acquired a lot of assets, however, we never set money aside to maintain them, so...
Yeah, go ahead.
Our town administrator can explain more thoroughly, but we voted an article this evening to create the Recreation Revolving Fund, if I'm, am I stating the name correctly? I think I am, and so the fees that are collected for the use of our town park by the parties that use it will be used to keep up the facilities down there, so they have a revolving account.
Can the CPA funds be used for maintenance, or is it just for capital? Okay, so that's a lot of capital that we're gonna spend without any maintenance backup through the CPA?
We do have a fund, we have a Pines Recreation Revolving Fund, it's being renamed.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Ken Peller, twenty Washington Street, I've been here since nineteen seventy-six, and if we waited for this government to do many of these projects, I'd be waiting, I'd be in the grave. So I watched all meetings, and I listened to all the groups talk about these projects, they're all excellent projects, and for a growing town, you have to have something to offer. You can't always worry about people from Hable coming here, or there's no money for this and that. It's good to have some positive people in here, and we need more positive people on some of the boards, instead of being roadblocks.
All right, let's stick to the article ahead. All right, let's, any other discussion? So we're gonna take a vote, under Article twenty-five, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
That is a majority favorable, passes. Article twenty-six, that the town appropriate a sum of up to, up to one hundred fifty-four thousand one hundred ten dollars from the Community Preservation General Reserve FY two thousand and twenty-three to be made available for constructing a Pines Tennis and Pickleball Court, the project is to be managed by the Recreation Committee and the town administrator under the CPA category of recreation.
So moved.
Motion is second, any discussion under Article twenty-six? All right, seeing none, we'll take a vote, all in favor of the motion under Article twenty-six, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Majority favorable, passes. Article twenty-seven, that the town appropriate a sum of up to four hundred eighty-two thousand dollars from the Community Preservation General Reserve FY two thousand and twenty-three to be made available for parking creation at Shanahan Fields, the project is to be managed by the Recreation Committee and the town administrator under the CPA category of recreation.
So moved.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion under Article twenty-seven? Go ahead.
My name's Dick Hodges, thirty-five Union Street, I have, actually nineteen eighty-three, my wife and I and two other couples started Groveland Soccer. We started out with fifty-seven, we now have hundreds of kids traveling, this is my fortieth year, painting the lines for the soccer fields, and I have to tell you that people have parked for decades, all forty years, people from other towns, our towns, have come in. Tonight, I'd like to echo what our selectman said, we've come here with an override, with significant amounts of money and deficits, and I have no money in my left pocket, which is what we're saying, that's why we've got an override, but we have over two million in my right pocket, and somehow the two million can't make it to the left pocket. I will probably vote no for this, this is my last, my fortieth and last year painting, I'm willing to train anybody that would like to take over my job, it's usually just me and the turkey buzzards, and it's something very special, it's something we started, and I feel like it's my baby, but to be spending this amount of money on parking is beyond believable.
Any other discussion? I think it'll pass, go ahead, Kathy.
First of all, thank you, Dick Hodges, for all your volunteerism for soccer, and by way of explanation, you know, I hate to spend money to build a parking lot, but unfortunately, with the growth in the soccer to two fields and the growth in the enrollment in it, people are parking all over the sidewalks and all over blocking driveways, and it's, it's getting a little bit too crowded, there needs to be a clearly designated parking area, and it just doesn't exist right now, and unfortunately, it costs a lot of money to put pavement down, I mean, it's an expensive endeavor, you do it once, and I'm sure we'll be able to keep it up, but I think it needs to be addressed, it needs to be taken care of, thank you.
Yep, yep, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Louis, I'm new to this type of system, so please bear with me, if anyone knows about the issue, at parking at Shanahan Field, it's me, I live at four twenty-five Main Street, which is the pink house right next to it. Yes, we do need parking, we need, we need to adjust the problem, but four hundred eighty dollars for a parking lot, that's already in existence, it's way too much, maybe if we can replan, get rid of the horseshoe, which is a useless patch of grass that nobody parks on, that would free up some space, basically, we need a plan it where, when I'm spending four hundred eighty thousand dollars to redo a parking lot that already exists, it shouldn't be that much, that's one. Two, there is an issue that was brought up, I just bought, well, we just bought the house about seven years ago, it was owned by a person, we bought it for a year, and prior to that, I believe it was the Piscatellis that owned it for about twenty years, so we're talking about almost thirty years of ownership of that property. Now, that property has been maintained by the owners of four twenty-five Main Street going back thirty years, an issue has come up, when it was planned to put the parking lot in, and fifteen foot by sixty feet of that property has been maintained by four twenty-five Main Street, now the city wants to come along and snatch that from us, and, and make that parking lot. I'm not saying vote against it, I'm saying put off the vote until that problem gets rectified, because it doesn't only affect myself, it affects other people in the neighborhood, and, well, obviously, I'm gonna say vote against it for now, until we can rectify that issue of that fifteen feet by sixty feet of property that's been maintained by four twenty-five Main Street for the past thirty years. Was that?
Um...
New to this, explain it to me, brother.
For more consideration, motion to table it.
Motion to table, whatever that means.
End it.
I know, I understand that.
All right, so we hit a motion table, is there a second? Any discussion on tabling this article? No, I just, so, good, but, so...
Can I, can I make a, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Okay, so I live at four twenty-seven Main Street, the White House next door, my mother lives at One River's Edge, so we are two of the Butters that live there. I will say, my parents built their home in nineteen eighty-seven, where they have maintained part of that parking lot, plowed it because the town does not. I will also say that the comments of, we're talking about seven to eight years of a fence being there that is actually on the property of One River's Edge, that is our second easement to get into it, which needs to be put a driveway, so it's not eminent domain, it's not been twenty years, that's why the fence would need to be moved for this project, so that we could put a driveway in and effectively have access to my mother's property. Without property, without access, she can't access her home, she's been there since, again, since nineteen eighty-seven. If you live there, you know, you, I mean, if you drive by on a Saturday and Sunday, you see that there is an abundant amount of parking on the sidewalk, I think it's a concern that if a child runs in between a car, what's going to happen, I think, to table this and to continue to not even appropriate the funds, to at least research it, nobody's saying it's set in stone, no one's saying the plan is ideal, if you've come to any of the meetings, there is the plan to get rid of the horseshoe, there is a plan to make sure that the person that lives in the Knox Building has appropriate access to park her car there, it resolves a lot of issues, so I hope that a lot of you took the time to watch these meetings about what they're talking about, what their plan is, it's not just, let's just grab a sum of money and not do some due diligence.
This is something that's not gonna get resolved right now, and I can just make a comment as to what she said.
Sure.
She's calling it an easement, from my understanding, speaking to City Hall personnel, they're not sure if it's an easement or a right-of-way until we can figure out if it's an easement or right-of-way, that makes a big difference on, on... an easement or right-of-way. That makes a big difference on, on, on making the decision. That's one. Two, there's plenty of room for people to drive back and forth into the back. Plenty of room. Yes, they do take care of it and thank you so much for keeping it clean, but it's, there's plenty of room for people to drive back and forth to the residents in the back.
All right, so...
I think until we, until we realize whether it's an easement or right-of, until we resolve the issue.
Yes, you said that, yep. Okay, we've got, that's clear. So I think we're clear on these things. We have a motion to table, requires, a motion to second requires a simple majority. All in favor of tabling Article 27, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
We're going to have a vote, hand count. So all in favor of tabling Article 27, raise your hand, keep it raised.
So would you be in favor of flickers for voting in the future? Okay.
We're going to move 32 in front of 28.
Okay, all, all opposed to tabling Article 27, raise your hand.
All right, folks, motion to table carries 182 in favor, 76? 76 opposed. So Article
27 is tabled.[806.01][806.01][applause] All right, I will, I've been informed that there might be some interest in moving Article 32 in front of Article 28, just for logistics reasons, the way the articles flow. Did somebody want to make that motion? I will entertain that motion if somebody wants to go out of order and move Article 32. Is that still, okay, go ahead.
I think motion that we move Article 32 ahead of 28.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Brian Lynch made the motion and Kathy, you made the second. So discussion, maybe you can explain why you made that motion?
Brian Lynch, Seven Star Road. The reason I made that motion is the fact that Article 32, Article 28 and 30 all have a pretty significant impact on VZ Park. So Article 32 where it's a visioning and feasibility study, if that flies and people think that's a good idea, which I do, it may influence the way people decide to spend money in the future at VZ Park. In the past, we've done studies such as with the fire department and we got a lot of good knowledge and information, we made good decisions. Now we have a good fire department, we have a good fire chief. We did it again with the municipal salaries, we went to the study group, we got good information, we made good decisions. I think the same thing should happen in VZ Park. If we get good information, we can make good decisions moving forward. Therefore, it might change perspective on how we handle 28 and 30, which are appropriating large sums of money for VZ Park.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator. I just want to dispute that last comment that Articles 28 and 30 really don't have anything to do with Article 32 other than there are some items at VZ Park in Article 28 and 30 is a building at VZ Park, but yet the plan for 32 is to really look at the, how events are managed at the park and perhaps turning it over to a third party. So it really doesn't have anything to do. I, I don't see why we have to change the order.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion to change the order? Let's take a vote. All in favor of moving, taking Article 32 out of order and acting on it now before Article 28, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
I will do one more time, all in favor of moving the Article 32 to now say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Sounds like we're moving on to Article 28. That motion did not pass. We will get to 32 after 31. Article 28, that the town appropriated a sum of up to $99,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve FY 2023 to be made available for planting, maintaining and preserving our historic trees. The project is to be managed by the Conservation Commission and the Town Administrator under the CPA category of Historic Preservation. Kathy?
So moved.
Motion is second, under Article 28, discussion?
Hi, Stephanie Bartel, Chestnut Street. I'm also a conservation commissioner and I just want to say that supporting and preserving our public area trees is important to protect the environment and deal with climate change in our town. Trees play a critical role in creating healthier, safer and more connected communities. They clean our air, filter our water and even slow storm surge and flooding. Trees also provide shade and they can cool our town by up to 10 degrees. Thank you.
Thank you.[1044.33][1044.33][applause]
Brian Lynch again, Seven Star Road. Nothing against trees, but we're talking about $99,000, all right? This whole thing, I think, really got started when Selectman Parento suggested we do something to protect Elm Park. We had a big investment down there, it's a gateway to our little town here. He wanted to make sure those elm trees were taken care of. They went out, talked to landscapers, tree companies, arborists, they got an estimate of around 15 grand to help keep Elm Park in good shape. Somehow it snowballed into spending $68,000 more at VZ Park. Again, it's, that's why I said this was a VZ Park issue. $68,000 for what's called, half of that or 35, 37,000 is for what's called a MAYAKI, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, Forestation Pilot Program. So we're talking about spending $37,000 on a pilot program, which means there's more to come to plant trees at VZ Park. Then there's another $35,000 to be spent at the base of VZ Park on Washington Street. So again, we're talking about spending $68,000 for trees at VZ Park. It just seems to me an awful expensive thing to be doing. I know we can't spend CPA money on other projects, I totally get that concept, but to be spending $68,000 to plant trees next to a forest, it just seems kind of absurd.[1132.22][1132.22][laughter]
All right?
Daniel McDonald, Wakey Lane. Preserving Elm Park, I support. That could be a much smaller amount of money, but I've yet to figure out what a historic tree is. We used to have the pines and it had pine trees and then they clear cut it and we got doggy Disney World down there. We have a solar panel over there that was an Eagle Scouts project back in the late 60s and they clear cut that for the Green New Deal for electricity from the sky. So this town's classic when it comes to hypocrisy on saving historical trees. We tear down historical high schools and junior highs. So what's a historical tree? Could somebody please tell me? Is it over 100 years old? Does it have bugs in it? Was it here with the pilgrims? Thank you.
Matthew Guillory, 18 Chestnut Street. This CPA project addresses trees in two entry points to our town, Elm Park and Washington Street. Both are important places for Groveland. As people enter and drive through town, they recognize the character of our small town and how we value our trees and the environment. To increase the beauty and pride that we have in our town, we will apply for a Tree City USA status with the Arbor Day Foundation, a recognition that we value and protect trees throughout Groveland. In addition, we will encourage residents to plant more trees in their own yards with a program to provide native tree saplings to anyone who wants them. All right, we'll just back and forth. Do you want to speak?
Yeah. Diane Plantamira, Mill Street. So it's, it's a pilot project up at VZ, but that only means that it's a one-time planting. It means that we haven't done this particular type of planting before. Milwaukee is a very famous way, method of planting trees. You may not know about it, it's okay. The goal is to complete this project, to replant native trees up there. There's an area that's completely overgrown with vines. We planted some beautiful native trees and these invasive vines, I think you all know Bittersweet. It comes around, it wraps around a tree, it kills the tree. So we have dead trees up there in this front area that is full of this bittersweet vine. We just want to reclaim that area and plant trees. That's what it's all about. The trees will be native trees and shrubs and we all know that native trees support migratory birds, they support butterflies, they support nature and all of us to enjoy nature. So please think about voting for the trees in this town. It's not just VZ, it's not just Elm Park, it's also taking care of some of the trees that are dead and dying. I'm a master gardener, I know that there's a whole lot of trees up on Uptech that are dead and dying because of the Emerald Ash Borer, all the ash trees are, somebody has to take them down. The highway department has no money to do that. We want to give them money to do that. The, there is, we want to plant new trees, we want to plant native trees, we want to give educational sessions to folks and families and give trees to families. So that's all part of this, it's not just VZ. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.[1344.97][1344.97][applause]
Jan Dempsey, Uptech Road. I just wanted to address a little bit about the confusion about the history of our town. So in 1850, when our town split off from Bradford, residents voted and eventually agreed to the name Groveland to honor our plentiful trees. Elm Park named Constitution Park when first created in 1832. It was only in 1857 that the elm trees arrived and with it the park's new name, Elm Park. By the 1950s, Dutch elm disease had ravaged most of the trees. In the early 1960s, the last tree was taken down and I'm sure a lot of you remember that from your childhood in your towns. You had an Elm Street or an Elm Park and the elm trees were obliterated. With state grants and local efforts, liberty elm trees were planted now and that's what we have now in Elm Park. The new elms continue to provide a stately vista as you drive through town. However, with minimal maintenance, the trees in our historic park are once again at risk. Maintenance has been lacking and we must develop a plan to provide it and protect those historic trees. And thank you very much for your consideration of this vote.[1424.83][1424.83][applause]
Inge Burger, Five Pine Wood Lane. This is much more than about planting trees, it's also about education, educating our residents about what types of trees work, what types of trees they should have in their, in their yards and helping them choose the right trees. This includes workshops for many people who would like to learn more about trees and how to maintain them. And I certainly hope you will think, a lot has been said already, I hope you will think about supporting this important project for our environment. Thank you.
All right, I don't see anyone else, so let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 28, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
It is majority favorable. Article 29, that the town appropriated a sum of up to $44,395 from the Community Preservation General Reserve FY 2023 to be made available for a basketball court restoration reconstruction at Washington Park. The project is to be managed by the Recreation Committee and the Town Administrator under the CPA category of Recreation.
So moved.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 29, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no?
No.
Majority favorable. Article 30, that the town appropriated a sum of up to $19,250 from the Community Preservation General Reserve FY 2023 to be made available for rehabilitation of an historic building, Lucille's Cottage. The project is to be managed by the Groveland Conservation Commission and the Town Administrator under the CPA category of Historic Preservation and Recreation.
So moved.
Motion is second and discussion, under Article 30.
Over here.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My name is Larry Elardo, I'm Mill Street in Groveland here. Lucille's Cottage has been, I don't know if you're familiar with it, it's the smallest building on the right-hand side of the chapel area as you're facing the main building. It's been a definitively underutilized piece of the property at VZ. Most everything else at VZ Hill gets used on a regular basis for group meetings and all kinds of different activities. Lucille's Cottage has been kind of just picked away at and kind of been an afterthought. So with Vanessa who runs a lot of activities up there, we came up with an idea for turning this building into artist studios and an art center place for Groveland. And we've been meeting with an architect in order to define what that is and what that would look like. Now, the plan we came up with came, there are about approximately 13 studio spaces in this building, plus there's a live-in space for visiting artists. There's also a space, a communal space that would be used as a gallery and meeting space in that building. And what we're looking to do right now is to take this to phase two and find out what this would cost and start the grant writing process and anything else we would do. This money is to just kind of get this project off the ground. Now, being an artist all my life, I know how hard it is to find studio space. Most of the time artists look for studio spaces in the most derelict neighborhoods you can find. Having a studio on a hillside overlooking grasslands and a lake would be something that every artist in the area would be looking to rent that studio space. And the idea behind this is to make this space a self-supporting space financially and to also encourage participation with the community and the artists who work there. And there's also maybe opportunities for workshops with artists. So the possibilities are endless, it's just right now at a point where we need a little bit of monies to start this process and really define it and make it work for the community. Thank you.[1694.01][1694.01][applause]
My name is Leah Crane in 405 River Pines. Larry Elardo just stole my thunder and I 100% support everything you just said. Thank you.
Thank you.[1710.11][1710.11][applause]
Brian Lynch again, Seven Star Road. It seems like every year we have more and more, you know, we seem to subsidize that via CPA. It's another project up there. Tonight they're asking for 20 grand or 19 grand, whatever it might be. Overall, this project, if you read the whole application, is a 700-plus thousand-dollar project for a 2,000-square-foot cottage. Old and historic aren't synonyms. Just because it's an old building, doesn't mean it's historic. And also, I don't honestly think this falls under CPA eligibility as recreation nor historic. Reasons for that are, recreation, as he stated, this is for rental space for artists. This is a business proposition. This isn't for the general, you know, use of all of Groveland at any given time, like the pines, we can go down there 24/7 and use any of the activities down there. So I really don't think it's really for the better recreation of the overall community. As far as historic goes, if you read, this isn't an historic restoration, this is a renovation that they want to do under the guise of historic. They're talking about using vinyl windows, builder's grade vinyl siding. So it's just a means to divert money to VZ Park to keep it somewhat viable on our tax dollars. So I just think it's like, you got to look at it hard. It's not just 20,000 today, it's...
Daniel McDonald, White Colleen. If they rent this out again, I don't think it's compliant with our CPA fund use, okay? And I agree that they're trying to use this.
A new point, Dan, if you're making something new.
A new point?
Yes.
I'm an artist, okay?
No.
I oil paint, and I paint in my dining room. We don't need private enourment in public facilities, okay? You're not going to rent this out to some private studio and say it's for the public good. That's nonsense. That is my opinion. Paint in your dining room, open the windows if you use oil paint.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yep, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Becky Beauchesne. I live on Salem Street. In the 27 years that we have owned V.C. Park, it has become a community space for Groveland. In a town with few community organizations, V.C. offers art, culture, children's camps, music, dance, and more. It is a gathering space for parents and children, veterans, school groups, political groups, businesspeople, and marketers. This project to rehabilitate Lucille's Cottage will further enhance that community spirit by bringing more focus on art, music, and theater. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Claire Walsh, 478 Main Street. V.C. Park is 47 and 1/2 acres, and it's conservation land, and it was decided that it was a historical society quite a few years ago by the commission. In the past 26 years, since 1996, V.C. has three buildings that have been completely renovated. And most of this work has been done with money that we've had from events or, you know, people actually volunteering to do things. The first Good Shepherd's Cottage, which sits in the back of the main building, was renovated. It was not livable. We have a rental unit going on there now. The second building, the old Wabanaki Farmhouse, which sits at the bottom of Nunn's Hill, that's been completely renovated. The main building has been, we've chipped away at it actually for about 26 years, here and there, doing things, you know, as we had money to do it. And last but not least is Lucille's Cottage, okay? This was built in the '30s. It was one of the prefab buildings. There's one other one that we know of here in Groveland. It's going to be a great place for artists. It's a great sight between the pond and the view from the hill. It's just a tremendous sight. And so, our goal, by doing all this work up at V.C. to all these buildings, is to make it self-sufficient, okay? And, end of story.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead.
Bruce Wood, 89 Gardiner Street. I am an artist. I have a studio in Lowell, Massachusetts. The reason I'm in Lowell is because there was no viable studios in this area. The studios that I'm in in Lowell have become an integral part of the city. Many of the residents of Lowell come out to the studios to learn about art, to take classes, to learn what's going on in the world through the eyes of an artist. So, this would be more, I think, than just some people renting art studios. This would be a valuable part to the culture of Groveland.
Thank you. All right. Looks like that's it. So, all in favor of the motion under Article 30, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Majority favorable. I was going to say culture in Groveland might be an oxymoron, but I wasn't, I didn't say it. We are cultured. We're getting even more culture. Culta, culta. All right, Article 31. That the town appropriate a sum of up to $32,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve FY 2023 to be made available for the River View Cemetery Monument Restoration. The project is to be managed by the Cemetery Superintendent and the Town Administrator under CPA category of Historic Preservation.
So moved.
Motion is second and any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 31, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We had Bob Gupt, who was a longtime resident of Groveland, passed away, I believe, I'm not sure when it was. Wasn't that last year? Yeah. And he was, I'm sorry, it passed. Majority passed. And he had done a lot of work on that, knew him. He was big into the history of Groveland, and he was a, was a good guy who cared a lot about Groveland. I'm sure a lot of you knew him. He'd be psyched that this is happening. Article 32. That the town appropriate a sum of up to $20,000 from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve FY 2023 to be made available for development of a visioning and feasibility plan for V.C. Memorial Park. The project is to be managed by the Groveland Conservation Commission and the Town Administrator under the CPA category of Historic Preservation.
So moved.
Motion is second. Discussion under Article 32. Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 32. Did somebody want to speak? Okay. All in favor of the motion under Article 32, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, passes. Article 33, that the town transfer the sum of $175,000 from the following. $40,000 from the Groveland Municipal Electric Department Operation Account, $50,000 from the Overlay Surplus Account, $85,000 from fiscal year 2023 Town Free Cash to reduce the fiscal year 2024 tax rate.
So moved.
Motion is second. Discussion. Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 33, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, passes. Article 34. That the town transfer $475,932 from free cash to the following accounts. This will be $50,000 to the Stabilization Fund Account, $50,000 to the Capital Stabilization Fund Account, $50,000 to the Municipal Building Improvements Account, $25,000 to the MS4 Storm Water Permit Account, $11,000 to the Personnel Buyback Account, $59,932 to purchase a line cruiser for the Police Department, $55,000 to purchase Jaws for the Fire Department, $75,000 to install a 911 system for the Bagnell Elementary School, $75,000 to install a new cafeteria door for the Bagnell Elementary School, $25,000 to remove the oil tank from the Bagnell Elementary School.
So moved.
Motion is second. Discussion under Article 34.
Mr. Moderator, Tracy Gilford for Abbott Circle. I'm just interested why a door for a cafeteria would cost $75,000? Can somebody answer that?
Do you have an answer? Go ahead. Oops. There you go, Charlie.
For the same reason we overspend on everything else, sir.
All right. Go ahead, Kathy.
Sarcasm.
So, by way of explanation on this article, this is the capital plan for the town. And as you can see, we're not borrowing any money. We're using reserves, free cash that we have. So, the $75,000 is based on the best estimate to buy and install the door. If it doesn't cost that much, I'm sure we won't spend it.
What's up?
Bob Deiforth, 293 Center Street. I'm the Facilities Director for Pawtucket Regional School District in Bagnell here. It's the two doors, it's going to be a set of doors out there in the hallway. So, if there's any break-in or anything like that, they can close off this area, close off the gym, and not enter the, so we have to have it designed and engineered and put in. That's what it is for.
Our, our police chief is here, and he could speak to this if you would like. He is a Georgetown resident. We have to take a vote to allow him to speak at our town meeting. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion, allow Chief Gillen to speak.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of allowing Police Chief Gillen to speak? Opposed, say no. Majority passes.
Tough crowd. I'm Jeff Gillen, your police chief. And I actually, when I was born, I lived in Groveland. I raised my family part of the way in Groveland, so I got a lot of history here too. But I'm passionate about this project. I'm the one that pushed for it. It is, as Deiforth stated, it's the doorway right here. And through our exercises and our training, we teach the children in the facility, people here, to lock down if there is a, God forbid, an incident here. And we recognize that this is a real deficit. If anybody was in this room and we had to have a lockdown, all the bad guy or people have to do is go up around the stage, and they can get in here. So, they're not safe if they're in here. So, unfortunately, there's a lot of money, which I, I know it's a lot of money. But it's, you got to get an engineer, and you got to have it reviewed, and it's just going to give us that capability to practice what we preach as far as the lockdowns and the plan to keep the kids safe here, and that's all it is. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dre. I live on School Street, and I'm on the PTA, and I'm a business owner in town. And I just want to second everything the chief said. I've been teaching schoolplace and workplace violence for Endicott College for eight years. The numbers are going up. The news don't tell you the truth, and that door is something that would save all of our kids' lives, and they're here every single day in this room.
All right. Let's take a vote under Article 34. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Majority passes. Article 35. Requires a two-thirds majority, that the town transfer up to $285,000 from the Stabilization Fund Account to offset the negative variance found in the vendor account with Eastern Bank.
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion under Article 35?
Yes. Kevin Defio, Center Street, Groveland. Where did that money go?
Who can answer that? Kathy? Is that you, or is that?
Well, I can tell you that in our meetings with the auditors, that they feel that they have identified this difference and that it needs to be dealt with. It's been there for a period of years. So, it was inherited by the staff that's here now. So, at some point, the best explanation, I mean, I'm a layman here, but the best explanation is the money was spent and not recorded.
Do we know if a town employee stole it, or?
The audits would have, I think they would have identified if they felt that there was any wrongdoing. We do a fairly thorough audit. We do an annual audit.
But how are we off by $285,000 on a budget?
I know, it's a significant amount.
How do we know it hasn't been stolen, or another department didn't double-dip into that? That should be looked into further.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's, let's take a vote under Article 35. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
That required a two-thirds majority. It did not have a two-thirds majority, does not pass. Article 36, that the town appropriate or transfer from the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund the sum of $250,000 to expend it under the direction of the Town Administrator to fund cable access services, supplies, and equipment for fiscal year 2023.
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion under Article 36? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 36, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All right, I know we're all tired, okay? Let's try it once more. All in favor of the motion under Article 36, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I believe that is majority in favor. Passes. Article 37. That the town transfer the sum of $7,398.05 from the Conservation Commission Fees Account to the Conservation Commission Expense Account for fiscal year 2024 for the Conservation Commission's operating costs.
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion under Article 37? Let's take a vote. All in favor of Article, the motion under Article 37, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous passes. Article 38, that the town appropriate $5,625 from the premium received upon the sale of bonds or notes issued for the Center Street land purchase, which are subject, are the subject of a proposition two-and-a-half-dead exclusion by the town, to pay costs of the project being financed by the bonds or notes, and to reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for the project by the same amount.
So moved.
Motion is second under Article 38. Any discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 38, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Majority favorable. Passes. Article 39, that the town transfer the sum of $165,000 from the Sewer Enterprise Department retained earnings to fund the SCADA system upgrade project.
So moved.
Motion is second. Under Article 39, any discussion? Let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 39, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Under Article 40, been informed, there's a couple of typos. It doesn't change things much, that some of the numbers are in the wrong place. I will read the motion. That the town transfer the sum of $538,000 from the Water Enterprise Department retained earnings to fund the following. $385,000 to fund the SCADA system upgrade project, $153,000 to fund Phase One of the lead surface line replacement plan. Did I do that correct, folks?
Yes.
Okay. That's the motion. Go ahead.
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Let's take a vote. The motion under Article 40, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, passes. Article 41. That the town appropriate the sum of $600,000 to pay costs of developing a new water supply source or sources, and all other costs incidental and related thereto, and to pay for said appropriation, the treasurer is authorized with approval of the select board to borrow $600,000 under and pursuant to general laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
So moved.
Motion is second under Article 41. Any discussion? I'm sorry, it's a two-thirds, requires a two-thirds vote. Thank you. All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 41, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
That is a two-thirds majority. It passes. Article 42. That the town raise and appropriate the sum, is that, this is only a two-thirds, okay? That the, the town raise and appropriate the sum of $1,215,276.046 for the use of the Water Department as set forth in Article 42 of the warrant, and that said sum to be offset by fiscal year 2023 Water Department revenue.
So moved.
Motion is second under Article, the motion, under Article 42. Any discussion?
I just offer that this is the operating budget for the Water Department, and it comes out of their revenue. That's what this is doing. For all those line items.
So, all in favor of the motion under Article 42, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, passes. Article 43. That the town raise and appropriate the sum of $671,855, I'm sorry, $855.21 to fund the Sewer Department salaries and expenses for FY 2024 as set forth in Article 43 of the warrant, said sum to be offset by fiscal year 2023 Sewer Department revenue.
So moved.
Motion is second under Article 43. Any discussion?
I'll just offer by explanation again that this is the line items for the Sewer Department operations, and this money would fund those.
All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 43, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous passes. Article 44, that the town raise and appropriate an additional $1250,000 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purpose of funding a portion of the Pawtucket Regional School District annual assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, contingent upon the successful passage of a levy limit override question in the amount of $1250,000 under general laws, Chapter 44. laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one C.
So moved.
Motion is second. I imagine it's a little discussion. Any discussion? No? All right. All in favor of the motion under Article forty-four say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Not sure. No, it, it passed. All right, folks, we've got a few more go here, so let's, let's get it done. Article forty-five. Okay, we're at our omnibus now, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's right at the end of the motion.
Yeah, so there is a motion at the end, but typically what we've done with these line items is I am gonna go down and read just the head, the categories. And if somebody wants to hold on an amount there, just yell out hold, and we'll come back and talk about it, okay? So under general government moderator, selectmen, town administrator, town accountant, board of assessors, treasury department, town council, technology, town clerk, economic development planning and conservation, municipal buildings, insurance, under public safety, police department, parking clerk, building department, emergency management, under education, I'm sorry, education.
Just the total amount.
What's that?
That's the total.
Fire? Oh, that's just the total, okay. Where's fire? Did I miss something? I've got that. Okay, under public works, tree warden, highways, rubbish collection, cemetery. Under human services, board of health, council on aging, veterans, library, debt service, Other raise and appropriate articles, other non-appropriate expenses. Looks like that's everything. So there were no holds, were there?
Yep. Education.
Did somebody, I don't wanna miss, did somebody say hold on?
Hi, Jared Demme, King Street. I had a hold on education with almost every budget going up. Why is the twenty-four projection for education going down?
Does somebody want to answer that? Just, if you could turn on your mic, is it on?
The omnibus that is presented in the warrant tonight does not include the one point two-five million dollar override. We cannot appropriate that until it passes on the ballot. So the Pawtucket-
That would be added on top again.
It would be added on top. Yes.
All right, okay. So the motion under Article forty-five is that the town raise and appropriate or transfer the sum set forth in Article forty-five of the warrant in order to defray town charges for the ensuing year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, the operations and expenses of the town in accordance with Article forty-five.
So moved.
Motion is second and discussion.
Discussion, Jen Close, twenty-four Highland Ave. There's no line for the fire department.
There is. It doesn't have a high conversation.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion under Article forty-five say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, passes. Article forty-six. See if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elective and appointed point of officers of the town for the twelve months ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, or take any other action relative thereto, fixing of salaries according to Articles forty-two, forty-three, forty-five above. Oops, I'm sorry. I always make at least one mistake. That's not the motion. Did I have to read the motion, right? That the town fix the salary and compensation of all elective and appointed officers of the town for the twelve months ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four according to Articles forty-two, forty-three, forty-five.
So moved.
Motion is second under Article forty-six. Any discussion? Take a vote. All in favor of Article forty-six say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, passes. Article forty-seven. That the town petition the general court for special legislation to decrease the size of the board of selectmen from five members to three members. Even if you're against, I'd like you to move it.
I don't want to move it.
It just makes it easier to discuss.
Okay, so moved.
We have a motion is second.
Yes, if my wife lets me in, Dick Hodges still at thirty-five Union Street. The reason, the reason I signed this petition is for decades, we have had three selectmen, and then we went to five, and then we got a town administrator. Now, the value of having a town administrator is someone unlike our selectmen, who many of them have jobs, but our town administrator can work-
Can you hear where that is?
-every day, all, all year round for the town of Groveland. So if that, if we have someone for the very first time who's working full-time for Groveland, why would we not want to go back to three? So in defense of that, if I was to defend the opposite of that, some would say that five, having five selectmen gives us more, more opportunities and more visibility from more people. And maybe if we're interested in having more people involved, maybe we ought to do something that Salem, New Hampshire did. They completely got rid of the label of selectmen, and they made nine councilmen, councilwomen. So if we're looking to establish more representation across Groveland, maybe that's the way we go. Regardless of how we vote tonight, I'm gonna sleep like a log. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Sure.
Hi, Chuck Fuller, Center Street. I'm really just curious as to where this even came from. It just, it shows up as an article, there's no context, and I see that it is also unfavorable by the finance committee and the selectmen. So can we get a little more insight here?
It was submitted by citizen's petition.
Okay. That's it?
There's a process in town government whereby a certain number of citizens can put together petition to have articles put on town meeting. I'm not sure of the number, how many is? Ten.
Ten. Yep. Okay. Got it. Thank you.
That's it.
So, hi. So some years ago, we had a committee for, hello? I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Good. Okay. So back in like two thirteen, two fourteen, we had a committee, we met for a year, we looked at other towns' forms of government. We like our open meeting, our open town meeting form of government, which is what we have now, which has an elected board of selectmen, and we opted on this committee to go for the town administrator to help with the day-to-day administration, because obviously, an elected board such as ours, most of us have jobs, we're not in town all day, we can't run a town, but we can reflect the wishes of the people, and we can act as an executive board, not an administrative board. So we voted as a committee to put forward to the people of Groveland at a town meeting and at a ballot vote whether or not to move the board up to five members. I don't want to tie you up for too long, I'll just give you a couple highlights of why five members is better than three. Five members includes more representation for the people of this town, there's more movement on the board. With a five-member board, a subquorum, two of us can meet and work on a project, it's not a violation of the open meeting law. With a three-member board, every time two members have a discussion on town business, even though they don't intend it to be something, it's a violation, it's an ethics violation, it's a violation of the open meeting law. The larger board can tackle more projects. Well, we don't go down and plow the streets, but yes, we can hear more projects, we can leave subquorum, meet on more projects. We also felt that it would ensure a more orderly functioning of our town government. I think people have seen that we don't always all agree on everything, so hopefully you see your point of view represented now and again, or your point of view represented now and again. We represent you, we are five people. At every election, there have been people running for these seats. I was told when I pushed to have five that nobody's gonna run. We've had plenty of people running, and it's been great. So I think five is good, and if someone wants to bring it down to three, they should go through the process of a committee and a ballot vote like I had to. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I, I'm calling twenty Washington Street. I've been watching all the meetings of all the different boards, and I always think that more representation is far better than less. Even though sometimes it's a clown show, it's better with more than less.
All right. And on that note, I think we're gonna take a vote. All in favor of Article, the motion under Article forty-seven, say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
Did not pass. All right, one more. Article, motion under Article forty-eight. That the town adjourned to the town election be held at Town Hall, one eighty-three Main Street, Groveland, Mass. on Monday, May first, twenty-twenty-three, between the hours of seven AM and eight PM to elect the town officers and vote on the following ballot question as set forth in Article forty-eight of the warrant.
So moved.
Motion is second and discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous.